Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council Municipal Authority Meeting. It's October 19th, 2021. It's 7:00 PM. We're in the council chambers here in the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street in the wonderful city of Yukon, Oklahoma. We'll begin our evening tonight with the invocation from Pastor Kyle Wardley from Town and Country Christian Church.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you so much for the opportunity to come together to try to make the wisest decisions for your people. And so, Lord, I pray that in our decision-making and in the presentations, Father, that we would remember that you love us all. So, Father, I pray, even though there may be a difference in of opinions, I pray that you would be glorified. Father, I thank you for our servant leaders. I thank you for the direction that they're leading us, and I pray that's the direction that you are leading them. Lord, I also am in a room full of first responders, and so I'm grateful for them. I'm grateful for their passion and their desire, Father, and their willingness and their humbleness in their servants' hearts to do what's right and to serve those in need. So, Father, I pray protection upon them, not only tonight but throughout this year. Father, I pray protection upon their families, that you would take the worry and some of the angst out of their lives. Father, again, we thank you for the compassion that we received at the cross, and we thank you that even through your son, Jesus Christ, there is a community that's bigger than Yukon. But, Lord, let us do well with what you've entrusted us. So, Father, be with us in this meeting. Allow your words to be spoken in truth and in wisdom. And, Lord, once again, we give you all praise, all glory, because of your son, Jesus Christ, who died on the cross for us, that we might even do simply this, pray to you. And so, Lord, it's in Jesus's power for me, pray. Amen?
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in the best will with liberty and justice for all. If we can have a roll call.
Selby?
Here.
Caccini?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Yonda?
Here.
Gilliland?
Here.
All right, we have a couple of presentations tonight. If you were wondering why we have such a big crowd, we don't normally have this many, but we're so glad you're all here. Our first presentation is to the Friends of the Library. So, if I could have the Friends of the Library come forward. Whereas the Friends of the Maple Sea Fry Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional materials to enhance the library collection, support reading programs for children and adults, and assist with special events throughout the year. And whereas the work of the Friends highlight on an ongoing basis, the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to present. And whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. And whereas the Friends gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. And therefore, I, Shelley Selby, Mayor of Yukon, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of October 17th through the 23rd, 2021, as Friends of the Library Week. In the city of Yukon, and I urge everyone to join the Friends of the Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better. Given under my hand and seal of the city of Yukon on this 19th day of October, 2021. Thank you, Father. You want to say a few words?
Thank you. We just appreciate the support of our community to help us with the Friends of the Library, because we couldn't do it without you. And we have our sales the first and third Saturdays of every month from 10:00 to 2:00, unless it's a special occasion, which will be the first Saturday in November, we'll be at the library. So, come out and see us, because we have hardbacks and we have paperbacks, and we would just love to see you. And again, thank you so much for your support, because our profits go to the library so that the materials can be updated for our community. So, again, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Let's give them another hand. Thank you. My kids grew up in that library and are the amazing humans that they are today because of all the reading that they were able to do. Now, I would like to... Oh, we're going to save that one, because I want to go where their people are. Our next one is to our National First Responders Day. So, could I have all of you come up? I see some faces of boys that I've known for a long time when they were little. Okay. Before I do this, I'm going to let you go around and tell who you are, what you work for, and what position you hold. So, let's start down here.
I'm Brandon Anderson. I'm Italian Chief for the City of Yukon Fire Department.
My name's Hunter Branscombe. I am an administrative project manager for Integris Canadian Valley Hospital.
Hi, I'm Brittany Ross. I'm the Surgical Services Manager at Integris Canadian Valley Hospital.
Good evening. I'm Brandy Stewart, and I am the Chief Nursing Officer at Integris Canadian Valley Hospital.
Hello, I'm Teresa Gray, and I'm the Chief Hospital Executive at Integris Canadian Valley Hospital.
Hello, I'm Tony Oterry, firefighter with Yukon Fire Department.
Hello, I'm Mike Pinkerton. I'm a firefighter with Yukon Fire Department.
Sean Vogt, I'm the Fire Chief here, City of Yukon Fire Department.
Rudy Sanchez, Sergeant here for the City of Yukon Fire Department.
Taylor Hughes, Officer with the Yukon Police Department.
Clay Rush, Sergeant on patrol for the Police Department.
John Korn, Chief of Police, City of Yukon Police Department.
Jeff Hill, Officer, Yukon Police Department.
Hello, Jeff Avers, Captain with the Yukon Police Department.
Carl Tucker, Sergeant, Yukon Police Department.
And this is just a small representation of the people that we have taking care of us at our hospitals, taking care of us in our fire department, and taking care of us in our police department. Without you, this would not be the most amazing city around. And so, I want to personally thank each and every one of you for putting your life on the line daily so that we can live and sleep and enjoy this community. So, I'm going to face you guys. Because I'm not tall enough. All right. Whereas individuals, both career and volunteer, including law enforcement personnel, emergency operators, dispatchers, firefighters, emergency medical technicians, hospital and medical facility staff, search and rescue personnel, and many others, serve the public as first responders in the event of an emergency. Whereas first responders are vital members of our community, protecting our neighbors and loved ones from existing threats and remaining vigilant for new threats that may emerge. Whereas through the course of the COVID-19 pandemic, first responders have been on the front lines in the ongoing effort to keep our communities safe from the wide-ranging and devastating effects of this virus. They have worked overtime, they've been away from their families, and in some cases, put their health and their lives at risk. Whereas despite the challenges and danger they face on the job, many first responders receive relatively low salaries according to the figures of the United States Bureau of Labor Statistics. Whereas the families of first responders also make significant sacrifices to support their loved ones' service. These family members live with the reality that their spouse, sibling, parent, or loved one may not return home from their job, and they deserve our appreciation and respect for bearing this burden. And whereas the city of Yukon recognizes the significant work and the sacrifices of our first responders and their families, we are especially grateful for their service that keep our community and citizens safe. Now, therefore, I, Shelley Selby, as Mayor of Yukon, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim October 28th, 2021, as National First Responders Day. And the city of Yukon, and I urge everyone to thank a first responder for keeping our communities safe and for all they do on a day-to-day basis. This is signed and given under my hand, the city of Yukon, the 19th day of October, 2021. Thank you. Conrad, can we get a picture? Again, thank you so much. Would any of you like to speak?
I would just say this. It's unique that we get to stand up here as a group knowing any given day, and we've been through some of it this past year, but to be able to have Teresa's number and call her at the office, or have Chief Vogt's number and call him at the office. It's one of the reasons, you kind of heard it touched on in the prayer, it's what makes this city unique, in that we can unite when we need to, to make sure everybody's got a safe place to live and that this community stays as great as it's been.
I would like to echo the same. It's been a tough couple of years, a year and a half. Without the support and partnership with our police and fire, we couldn't do what we do either. So, we appreciate that support, and I also want to thank you for your leadership. It's been tough.
Well, I know, speaking for our guys, they take great pride in serving the citizens of this community, and I think they really appreciate the support we get from the community. And I'd also like to thank our administration and our city council for their support. It's been very helpful. So, thank you.
What if y'all get to keep it? Thank you so much. During COVID, the hardest part of that, several of these people I met with on a weekly basis, and I could not have gotten through my week without them. They gave me the information that we needed as a city to make the best choices. I have one more. But I'm going to do it from up here, because there's not a recipient. The recipient for this proclamation is the city of Yukon, its people and its citizens. This one was brought to my attention, and we were like, you know, this isn't one... There's no one to receive this. But I don't know if you know how blessed we are to live in this city. When there's a need, it's met. If you're not on Facebook, which I don't promote, but if you're not on there, somebody will say, hey, I need this, and within a matter of minutes, it's there, and their needs are met. We have the most giving, caring community. We have amazing support and charity. So, whereas Yukon, Oklahoma is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. Whereas Yukon, Oklahoma is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. Whereas Yukon, Oklahoma is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. Whereas Yukon, Oklahoma acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support the Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2021. Therefore, I, Shelley Selby, Mayor of Yukon, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2021, to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their effort, commitment to make their organizations, family, community, country, or world a better place. And it's in the city of Yukon, we urge everyone to go the extra mile. This is given under my hand and seal, the city of Yukon, 19th day of October 21st, to all the people who volunteer, who give beyond what they have. They give out of their pockets deeply. Thank you so much. So, thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. You guys are busy, you first responders. We'll see you. Thank you for being here. We appreciate you. All right, we will... Now, do we have any visitors that would like to speak?
I have no requests, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We will recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve (a) the minutes of the regular meeting of October 5th, 2021; (b) material claims in the amount of $701,472.21. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Item 2A, Consider Approving the Amended Facilities and Utilization Agreement Between Southwest Covenant Schools Incorporated and the Yukon Municipal Authority of Public Trust as recommended by the city manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
We'll now adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1, Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve (a) the minutes of the regular meeting of October 5th, 2021; (b) payment material claims in the amount of $1,125,990.43; denial of claim number 210377-1 from Crystal Ackerman for damages to vehicle during a traffic accident as recommended by Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group; (d) denial of a claim number 210377-2 from Ashley Mattson for bodily injury during a traffic accident as recommended by Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group; (e) setting the date for the next regular council meeting for November 2nd, 2021, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Do we have any reports of boards, commissioners, or city officials?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, I would like to first apologize for the short notice of the railroad Union Pacific closing, Vandement and Ranchwood. We did not know that they were planning to close it. They had not informed the city. As you all know, the railroad does not ask us for permission to close down streets and crossings. And so, first, I want to apologize for them closing that this morning at Vandement and Ranchwood. They did not get finished. They were planned to finish today, but they did not get finished. So, they will be there through tomorrow afternoon. So, again, I apologize for any inconvenience this causes our citizens.
Well, thank you. And again, we wish that they would give us notice so that we could give you notice on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Item 3, Consider Approving the Expenditure Funds in the Amount of $302,545 to Breckner State Contract SW0035T and J&amp;R Equipment State Contract SW197 for a 2022 Max sanitation side loader with labary body as approved in the 2021-2022 capital improvement budget as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Caccini?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Item 4, Consider Approving the Expenditures and the Funds in the Amount of $27,978.59 to COPS Products for specialized armor equipment for members of the Yukon Police Department as approved in the 2020-2022 capital improvement budget as recommended by the police chief. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Item 5, Consider Approving the Purchase of Body Camera Units, Software and Hardware, as Well as the Storage of Evidentiary Video in the Amount of $34,020 annually for five years to WatchGuard Video in accordance with the State Contract SW1057W as approved in the 2021-22 capital improvement budgets as recommended by the police chief. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one question about the storage on... And just because I'm curious, is that... Whose property is that, and then how long does it stay in storage?
It's our property, and it's cloud-based storage at 50 gigabytes per unit, but the storage is pooled. So, you may have one unit that doesn't record that much data in a cycle. So, if we have to share the minutes, or we are sharing the minutes, we're sharing the storage amount.
And then how long does that... Is that retrievable or accessible, or is there a law that requires it to be maintained, and then it drops out?
Same record retention, excuse me, that is in play for hard document is what will be... We'll have to follow the same statutory requirements for the retention of the video that we take on the scene of anything. That is going to vary by type of incident. Traffic stops, you know, 180 days. Capital crime, that's indefinite.
So, if a party to a court case wants to access that as evidence, is that... Would that be the... Would this company release without...
No, they would not.
So, they would come through the police department?
Yeah. If it was a criminal case, they would have to file that with the district attorney's office to find it or retrieve it under, you know, disclosure. If it is a municipal claim or something we would deal with through O-MAG, they would submit a request to city attorney, and then he would make that request.
Okay, very good.
All right, let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item 6, Consider Entering Into a Land and Water Conservation Fund Project Agreement with Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department for the Freedom Trail Playground Splashpad Project in the Amount of $1,200,000 as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have one question, and we may not have an exact answer yet, but I'm just super curious about timelines as far as...
As far as...
Maybe like a couple of the steps that are involved as far as the planning, and then when could we expect, you know, to see dirt moving and that kind of thing, if we have an idea yet? I know...
I am hoping... Unfortunately, this has kind of been delayed on the timeframe, but I'm hoping that in six months, we start seeing dirt move. We have two years from the date the contract was given to us, which supposedly was August 9th. We have two years to complete the project with the grant.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. And if you had given it a little notice too, you might have had more timelines. I wish we'd asked earlier. Thank you.
No, that was a perfect answer. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item 7, Consider Entering Into Agreement with Planning Design Group for the Design and Construction Services of the Freedom Trail Playground and Splashpad in the Amount of $87,500 as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept.
Second.
Any discussion?
Tammy, on this 87.5, is that pulling from the 1.2? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Let's vote, please.
Caccini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item 8, Consider Approving Amendment Number 1 and Change Order Number 1 for the State Highway 4 Sewer Line Relocation Project at a net decrease of $17,816 for a revised contract amount of $1,251,264.30 to Craft Rentals Construction Company as recommended by the city engineer. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I always like to see when we get a decrease, if something's cheaper than we thought. Okay, let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item 9, Consider Accepting the Sanitary Sewer Line Relocations Along State Highway 4 Project and Placing the Maintenance Bond into effect to serve State Highway 4 located north of Main Street and south of Wilshire Boulevard, Yukon, Oklahoma, as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Item 10, Consider Approving Amendment Number 2 for State Highway 4 Waterline Relocation Project at a net decrease of $45,997 for a revised contract amount of $535,952 to Shawnee Mission Tree Service Incorporated, doing business as SMC Utility Construction as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item 11, Consider Accepting the Waterline Relocations Along State Highway 4 Project and Placing the Maintenance Bond into effect to serve State Highway 4 located north of Main Street and south of Wilshire Boulevard, Yukon, Oklahoma, as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item 12, Consider Approving Resolution Number 2021-17, a Resolution Concerning Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Funds for non-entitlement units of government, American Rescue Plan Act funds, and authorizing the acceptance of the funds, the appropriate budget amendments, and the execution of all necessary agreements and related documents as recommended by the city manager. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Tammy, you want to tell us just a little bit about...
Madam Mayor, this resolution had an error in it, in the packet that went out and that was published online. The version we're going to sign tonight simply corrects the error. It does not materially change the resolution in any way, but I just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
You want to touch base on this, just kind of explain?
Yes, this is... Sorry. This is regarding the ARPA funds and our allocation that we received. We received half of it. And in order for us to follow the guidelines and make sure that everything is done correctly, we are... In the next item, we're going to be doing a budget amendment so that we can put that into capital. And the money has gone into pooled cash, but we will put it into capital so that we can start replacing our water and sewer lines and move forward with that, those projects.
And how much of the funds have we received?
Two point... Almost two and a half.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, let's vote, please. Alright, let's vote, please.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item 13, consider approving budget amendments establishing an American Rescue Plan Act fund for physical year 2021 to 2022. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept. Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Caccini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Item 14, consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount of $26,250 to game court system purchased off the Byboard Purchasing Cooperative Contract number 583-19 for a peak-fold gym divider curtain at Jackie Cooper Gym as recommended by the Assistant to the City Manager. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item 15, consider approving the amended facilities and utilization agreement between Southwest Covenant Schools Incorporated and Yukon Municipal Authority of Public Trust as recommended by the City Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item 16, consider a motion to recess as Yukon City Council and convene into the executive session for discussion regarding the litigation of the Williams Family Investment LLC as provided for in 25OS 2003, Section 307B4. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. And I'd like for Roger, Tammy, Doug, and Mitchell to join us, please. Everybody went home. Thank you. Item 17, we consider a motion to adjourn from executive session and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Give me just a second, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, we're moving. It's Pastor Rick's bedtime.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Caccini?
Yes.
I would now like to read the minutes of the executive session. While in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed, no action was taken, and no votes were cast. Do we have any new business?
No new business tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council discussion, let's start with Councilman Gilliland.
I'm just gonna share a personal note tonight. One of my favorite quotes is from Henry Ford. He said, "There isn't a man living who cannot do more than he thinks he can." And I've always grabbed a hold of that and believe that. But this week also learned that there's a piece of that that I hadn't thought about before, and that's the word patience is sometimes required to put that thought into motion.
Councilman Caccini?
Well, I wanted to thank the city and the folks that ran the check parade. It was a great parade, the kids were fine, everything was just outstanding. I also want to thank Main Street, Vicki Davis, and Tammy and the rest of the staff for providing the veterans, the banners thing. And I've had a lot of calls, I've been getting a lot of calls about the banners, and I appreciate the city supporting them. And the other point I want to make is on the veterans gala.